Can I get a motion to open the meeting?
No.
Second.
All in favor? Let's hand over the fudge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and just as eternal. All right. Apologies, some of the printed out agendas are not up to date, as I'm sure most of you realize. We planned this meeting pretty quickly, so it's been fluid as the days goes on, with doing has gone on. So we're going to start with public input. If there's anybody here for public input, please come up to the podium, state your name. You have three minutes to address the board, and please leave any individual names out of your statements. Anybody here for public input?
Hi, Sandy Cole. Well, I didn't know if there was going to be public input or not. As you said, the agenda stated that there wasn't. I do have a question, several questions. You're going to speak about the coronavirus. I don't know how you're able to classify that as executive. I know you're going to use the word safety of children. If you delve into your law books, educational law, a little harder, that is safety of terrorist attacks, safety of mass problems, not a public coronavirus that's going across the world. What you're doing is you're creating more frustration and fear in the public, because now there's people thinking that there's somebody in our school district that possibly has it, and maybe someone's been exposed to it. I think going into executive session is wrong to go into to discuss it. I've been a board president before, and I've never seen something like this. So my question is, and I'm going to get an answer, do you plan on coming out of executive session and making any resolutions? Is that on the agenda? Is there a possibility for you to come out of executive session and vote on a resolution tonight?
We haven't been able to come out of executive session. There's nothing, to my knowledge, that's going to be requiring a board action. Okay, thank you. Anybody else here for public input?
Sure. I'm Larry Balt. My question, or my comments tonight are just that I realized that tonight's meeting was called in haste and took together quickly. When I became aware of the meeting, I checked on the agenda, and then I saw that the topic of discussion was the coronavirus, so I thought, oh, good, I want to come and find out about this. But then I realized that it was pure executive session. So for me, when I'm looking at the regulations regarding exec session, I can't see a single thing on there that relates to public health discussions and the district's response to those things. And I just hope that, you know, you'll reconsider and have it public. I think this is just a really good thing for everybody here to know about. I think it's important to understand what the board's thoughts are. I also hope that if you choose to go into executive session, that you just don't recite the boilerplate or going in for a particular reason. I would like to know exactly why you're going into executive session, to discuss the coronavirus and other than doing this in public view. That makes no sense to me. That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Is anyone else here for public input? All right. So thank you for both of your comments, and I hope you'll stick around for the rest of the meeting. I'd like to get a motion to go into executive session in order to discuss, one, a matter involving a particular student; two, a matter concerning the employment of a particular person; three, collective negotiations; and four, a matter which, if disclosed, could imperil public safety.
Second.
All in favor?
For the review of discussion, please.
Sure.
If we are going to be discussing the virus or safety issues after exec, then I think we have done this wrong, because to have it where the public has to sit in a hall and not know if they're waiting a half an hour, or an hour, or an hour and 15 minutes, is not in respect of their time and effort. So, and what you've just outlined, and I appreciate the detail, is very different than what was posted on the website and communicated to the community. So I'm just concerned, and I know I don't believe that this is in any way deliberate, but I'm concerned that we're not acting in a way that is transparent enough and should be much more transparent.
I agree. If this wasn't a rapidly flowing situation and wasn't developing so quickly, I would love to take more time and have spent all weekend or the coming days planning a perfect meeting. But that's not the case we're in right now. So as much as I respect your thoughts on this, I respectfully disagree with you. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, I would just say, and I was late. And I guess it's a simple comment and discussion, but this is a public health situation, and I appreciate Trudan calling a meeting at short notice so that we can try and address it. And as I understand it, we're proceeding under the advice of council. And just to respond to some of the comments, of course, this is something that is very public, and we want to hear from the public, and we have an obligation to be communicating with the public. But there are aspects of this that necessarily need to be discussed in executive session, and that we're doing that. And as I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, Trudan, proceeding as we were advised to by council. And let's not lose sight of the forest for the trees here. And I appreciate Chris's comments as well. But our primary function here is to be looking out for the safety of the kids who go to school here and the folks who work here. And let's try to stay focused on that. And so I think you are proceeding as you were advised to by our attorney, and so I'm in favor.
Was the attorney consulted about specifically what we're covering as in terms of coronavirus in the exec session?
I believe so. Ellie had conversation with her.
So we're not covering anything that wouldn't potentially imperil students and that we would by law be required to discuss publicly?
After the executive session, we'll discuss publicly where we are with all the information and move forward with that publicly.
It'll be this evening for everyone here if they want to stay.
Okay. I didn't realize you were doing that. I think that maybe the.
Yeah, you came in a few minutes late. So we had already discussed that the agenda was changing.
The front doors were all locked, so we had to find another way to get in the building. You were on lockdown. But the, no, I'm only asking because the agenda as of an hour ago didn't indicate we were going to have that agenda item publicly. So that's good to hear.
And just to follow up on that, literally in less than an hour ago, we received the information from the state and the Department of Education. It's literally puddled to press. So this information and this situation is as I think as we speak. And so we hope that people will understand that we will move forward with addressing the issue as quickly and appropriately as we can.
Any other discussion?
Would encourage the public to state. I know it's uncertain as the time, but if you could state, that would be great.
All in favor? So Ellie, I think the next part is for you. Are you going to inform us on the public portion of this regarding more general?
Yes, and there obviously has been a tremendous amount of information. We have shared the information publicly as we have received it in less than 24 hours on six different documents. The first document, last evening, we presented an update to the staff of where we have been up until last evening. And that included that up to date that there were no confirmed local cases and that we would continue to post on our website any information that we receive regarding other districts' information, the state, and any other information we receive. And Scott has set up a site on the website where we will now post all of the information in English as soon as we get it. And Fausto has been kind enough to say that he will update the information in Spanish. And the document we got today, I think, was 19 pages, so it's quite extensive.
I'm sorry, the Spanish is not possible now.
So quickly? Wow. That's impressive. Thank you. We did share the information of the confirmed information that we had got, that there was one patient in Southampton Hospital, and also that students from overseas would be quarantined at Stony Brook Southampton Campus, which is what we knew last night. Paul is continuing to have custodial staff wipe down the surfaces that are used, the cafeteria tables are being cleaned constantly. We've ordered new supplies. The nurses have ordered more thermometers, and we've filled up with as much of the supplies that we can. Some of the supplies that we've ordered are on back order, so we hope to keep the supplies. But we're constantly maintaining and disinfecting surfaces. We are now in the process of talking about with the administrators all of the activities that we're considering canceling. And that's changing on a minute-by-minute basis depending on the information that we receive. And shortly, we'll review some of those activities that we're in the process and that staff members can contribute ideas of the kinds of things that we are considering. And then we have also indicated that students who are absent, we want students and parents to understand that they should, if their children are not well, to keep the children home, that they should not feel compelled to come to school to keep up perfect attendance, that those absences will be excused. And we also are indicating that any suggestions that people have to share with us, we appreciate, because there, because we will realize so many aspects that are new to us and we have to consider. So that was last evening. This morning, we received a notice from the Superintendent's Association awaiting guidance on closing schools. And the conversation, we were supposed to have had that guidance last week, and everybody's been waiting for the updated guidance, because there have been conflicting sets of information given out by different agencies, and people wanted clarification. There was an extensive meeting last week with, I think there were 13 presenters. And the superintendent, after the presentations, the superintendents asked questions so that we could have more clarification, and there were no answers. And they, the presenters actually got indicated that they were surprised at some of the questions themselves, things that they had not addressed. So these are ongoing issues. Then after that, there was a conference call with superintendents and the Health Department for we have today. And items that were discussed were self-quarantining, what was required for that. The hotline was not responsive to some people who were calling for information. They promised that they would increase it, so it was 24 hours, so we hope that that is more responsive. At that point, there was only one case in Suffolk County. Advice was given to, quote, "stay the course," whatever that meant. Obviously, they did not want people to panic and make decisions as we go along. The question of overnight trips came up, and there was not a clear answer to that as well. Conflicting information had been released to parents as to what to do and how to make decisions. And at that point, the information that was given out to superintendents was that if the person was not presenting any symptoms, that there was no reason for them to go home. That was the latest information as of about 12:30 this afternoon. And after that, two other districts closed.
I have a question about if they were presenting symptoms. Does that mean, like, if they were exposed it and they weren't presenting?
A person, yeah, who might have been exposed. The question came up also regarding the 14-day period, people who might have been exposed in, you know, prior to 14 days. So there were a lot of questions, and there weren't clear answers at that point, still waiting for further guidance. Then after that, since then, there was information that Madetuck, Plainview, Elizabeth Page, Soho, Wading River, and Uniondale had issues. So from this morning to this afternoon, there were four districts that were noted.
Are they all closing? Is it doing that?
Yeah, Plainview, Elizabeth Page is closed tomorrow. I think Uniondale.
And they're not sure how long they'll be closed? We got a notice from Madetuck. And again, they may close for one day while they clean, and each day, we have to find out what the information is. Then we received information from our attorney later on regarding information that we should send out to people if, for instance, during the next break, they travel to the countries that are indicated as level two and three, that the issue of the quarantining when they come back. So that, we haven't really had a chance to digest that, because that, again, just came in with an hour of the start of this meeting. And then after that, we got, finally got information from the state, which I forward to you and Scott, posted on the website. That's quite extensive, and that indicates the steps that we need to take, many of which were in the process of taking, and all of the things that we need to consider, and the actions of updating our plans and incorporating what we would do if we had to close, and notifications, and timelines, and so on. So that's information that we all have to work on and digest. So in less than 24 hours, we've had quite a bit of information change. We anticipate that that will continue to happen as this is obviously unfolding information, and we have to really follow the guidelines. And so we'll keep everybody posted as soon as we have it, and try to be as clear as possible as to what we know, what's in flux, and as changes come through.
The information that we have on our website, I've seen some districts have sections where, let's say, Corvair, and then they have, like, all these documents underneath it. Can we just, if it's possible, on our website, work on whatever information we have, as long as it's not confidential, obviously, and unless it's personnel-related, it shouldn't be confidential with this, is to just have it in an area and let the public and families know? Is it? So we have all the documents?
On the main page, you just click on the, it says, click here for information.
And all the documents we have are in the attached? Okay, good.
We had previously submitted documents, which are now outdated. So we started from Fridays, right?
Okay.
Just the latest, because a lot of the information in the previous documents is no longer accurate.
Have we thought about having a workshop or forum for parents in the public ahead of time? Like, you know, we're going to, you know, and see if anybody, I mean, maybe people don't want to come in a group. But if they want, you know, if they do, and they want to say, like, I'm concerned about this or questions about that, just give, you know, they've done that in some districts, and it's gotten some positive response. Is that something we're thinking about doing?
We're open to suggestions on what will, the information that people would like to have and the form in which they would like to have it. So if you have gotten feedback of what people would like, we appreciate sharing that as well.
Because there's the documents we're getting from the state, and then there's, like, the conversations we're having tonight, where, you know, what's the process in which, and what ifs, and those kinds of things that that people don't want to know about.
Absolutely. And we had prepared a list of the various upcoming activities and programs, and I'd like to ask people to provide their thoughts and principals and staff to provide their thoughts on kinds of things that they're considering. For sports activities in general, we feel it's important to be very proactive and cautionary and to avoid large groups where people will be coming together in, might be in close proximity, people that are coming from areas that we don't know, people who could have visited other countries and so on. So all of those things that we're taking into consideration.
In terms of sports, if we're, if there's a schedule we're supposed to play a school, and that school is closed because of this, one would assume that that sporting event is going to be rescheduled?
It'd be rescheduled or canceled, depending on the, if it's a playoff game or varsity level, or depending on the level of the game.
I also think, though, the broader question, and we don't have to decide tonight, but I think we have to decide soon, is, and I talked to Eric about this earlier today, is do we consider curtailing our curricular activities where kids are traveling to different parts of the island if we're truly trying to contain and limit our exposure?
Do we have a sense of what other districts are doing, ones that have not shut down yet?
Everybody is texting everybody else.
Well, and it's also, if you do a survey of all the districts, depending on where they are and what day it is, it's changing. So, like, last week, if you looked on Noodle Shell's website, it said all activities after school are canceled. They then subsequently had to close school. So it's, you know, each district and each day, it's changing.
Yeah. It's a complicated, volatile situation.
I'm sorry. Tonight, our girls concluded their varsity basketball season. We are, actually, today was the first day of varsity spring sports. Middle school sports don't start till March 22nd. We do have a 10- to 10- to 12-day window here where we won't have any scheduled contests at the varsity and junior varsity level. However, we still have middle school contests scheduled for the next two weeks. I don't know if the board would look into that. We will be hosting other schools a few times over the next couple of weeks, as well as traveling to East Hampton and Southampton and Hampton Bays and East Merritts and those such. So, you know, we do have a window now, because if we wanted to be more restrictive, the timing right now would be, would be the time to be more restrictive, if we just wanted to keep our teams here.
And we are leaning toward being more restrictive. A perfect example would be the robotics. Districts were going back and forth for days about what to do, and finally, today, they did cancel it. But the organization itself, but that, everybody wants the kids to be able to participate as much as possible, and yet, the concern, and so those discussions are going on. And the next event is the multicultural night, which is a wonderful opportunity, but we're leaning towards canceling that as well. We need to inform people, because a lot of preparation goes into it. So within the next day or so, we'll be able to be more forthcoming with the particulars.
To speak to Chris's question, you know, what are other districts doing? I would just say that in my, you know, 25 years of doing this, this is unlike any other, you know, health situation that we've run across. And that lends, you know, in terms of what are other districts doing? That's the way I usually think.
But not in this circumstance.
But not in this situation, because I feel as though everybody has sort of been in a holding pattern, waiting for guidance. And yet, it really hasn't come down until this afternoon. And even that guidance, to me, is sort of.
Could be outdated by tomorrow.
It's also not specific in clearance.
It's not a crystal-clear guidance. So I think, you know, unfortunately, we're sort of operating as somewhat of an independent entity this time, and we have to take the information and make the best decision we can in the interest of what we value.
Right. So in terms of moving forward on this, because, and it's very helpful, the board here has gotten a list of upcoming events. Some of them are this week. That are decisions made, and if not, are we looking to hear with those decisions the thought processes of what you're going to get to those decisions? I mean, some of these are in a day or two. So what are you guys thinking? I mean, you're the ones that are going to be making the call.
I, I think I have concerns over, because the kids are going to, it's middle school, and maybe I'm being extra motherly, but I have concerns over the North Shore Math Tournament, because they are in a close proximity within an environment, and they're working together in groups, and they're traveling far up island. So it's not like they're going close, and that's on Friday. I already talked to Mr. Malia about it, and I said we were going to discuss it tonight. Maybe I'm being extra conservative, but I have concerns with our kids going. It's a fantastic opportunity that they're going to miss, but I have concerns over it.
Yeah. Without getting into the specific events, because I don't think that's what we were going to do, I think that the lens that I'm going to apply to it, in terms of what the thinking's going to be, because that was your question?
Yes.
Is to limit the extent to which kids, the students under our charge are put in harm's way. And obviously, people are going to have different opinions about what is, you know, what constitutes harm's way. But right now, it's very, very fluid. It seems like every day, there's going to be more and more of these cases out there. So if I'm charged with making a decision, the lens I'm applying is how do I protect the students under our charge? Which means I'm going to be inclined to cancel a lot of activities where I can't accurately ascertain whether or not they're going to be at risk of contacting the virus or not, or being exposed to it. Does that make sense?
I think that sounds very wise, and I think we should err on the side of caution and being overly cautious. I'd much rather, a couple months from now, look back and say we canceled a couple things that maybe we didn't need to, than not be cautious enough and put more people at risk.
Yeah, I think parents and probably staff will also breathe a sigh of relief knowing something is canceled. Of course, there's going to be both sides of it, but I know even today, I mean, even last week, there were people coming and saying, when will morning program be canceled? And then you did it, a lot of people breathed a sigh of relief. Other people won't. But just, you know, there are those people who are breathing those sighs of relief and support you.
You never know the bullet you dodged here, so to speak. You never know that when you cancel it, someone, a child or an adult, would have gotten sick had you had it. So what we're doing is preventing something that you can't actually say, look, we've prevented.
And that's for the near future, right? We're keeping that until the near future?
Until further notice, until.
We make a decision on it, that's.
And it's hard to know. It's hard to know if we're looking at a few months or if we're looking at something more substantial, because we, there's no rulebook or playbook for this. And it would, it would appear that we are, we are not in the recovery mode here. We're in the expansion mode here, all right?
Yeah. And then, you know, I think, obviously, the conversation starts with keeping the children safe. But I think the other piece, and this went into the decision for canceling something like morning program, you know, it's a very important part of our school day, but our school day can go on without that. So we want to keep the children safe, but if we can also maintain the school day, you know, then we're taking care of two important things, so.
And that, you know, in morning program, you also have community members coming in, and so you're creating an additional risk you don't have in the rest of the day.
Right.
So we're anticipating that after tomorrow's BOC's meeting in the morning, that we will have, hopefully, we'll have more definitive information and then we'll be able to determine which activities we will cancel.
And then the other thing, the piece to think about is just how do we have a really effective communication plan about, that's very timely, specifically about the events? Because that, you know, it could be we're canceling something tonight or tomorrow just based on new information you received. And so just proactively, I would, I know we always work hard on communication, but we really make it very clear. And then we ask the, ask the school family, if you feel like you're not getting communicated well, what are you suggesting here? Just so that they know that we're working hard to try to make sure that we're on the same page.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else?
I just wanted to bring one more point, and I know maybe we're jumping the gun here. I had today, like, three families from the city that they asked me that they want to move out here in the spring, so I don't know if that could affect the enrollment in the schools out here.
Oh, because they're afraid to be, they're trying to be.
Just something to bring it up and, like, start thinking about it.
Related to this?
Yep.
That's good information. Thank you.
Like, just today, I had three families.
It's going to happen, happen after.
Yeah, happen after 9/11.
Yeah. And I mean, I was speaking this weekend with a New York City Health Department worker that deals with the situation, and she thinks there are thousands of cases right now in New York City that they just haven't, like, come out yet. So they could be, like, the way the stock market, like, there was a panic today, there could be a panic in a couple of weeks. So we just need to be prepared.
Thank you for sharing that. That's good information.
All right. So I think you all know the board supports you guys on this, and it sounds like everyone's in agreement that, you know, err on the side of caution. Cancel things sooner than later, as you see fit.
Can we also just touch base briefly on if, because we don't know if this will happen? If it does, how fast it could happen, where we would have to close? Let's hope we don't have to close. But if we have to close, based on what we know now, what should folks expect? In terms of the type of communication and how we've thought about potentially providing instruction? A few things, go ahead.
Yeah, obviously, if we have to close, it would depend on the circumstance, whether it's a one-day close or whether, and we have to wait, or whether it's going to be longer depending upon the reason for the close and the direction we get from the Department of Health. So those would be two different methods, and we would communicate with the media, with outbursts, with any information and the way that we get that information out. And the whole idea of the way in which we would provide instruction is what we've been discussing. It's new, and then at the same time, we have to update all of the required information for all the reporting that we're required to do, and all the other agencies that need to be notified. to be notified. So, that's, we're developing all of that as we speak, and we're hoping that we'll be able to communicate, post everything on the website as we develop it, so people are informed as it develops. But any, any avenue or pathway that people can suggest that would be helpful and inform people, we're certainly open to ideas on how best to do this and keep everybody as safe as possible.
Can I just add to that? I did send around messages today to all the staff, checking to make sure that everybody can be reached, you should have gotten as well. Also added a link today on the website for community members without children in the school, if they'd like to get updates from us, they can fill a quick form with their email address, and they'll add them to the list that-
That's a great idea.
We send out, we don't send everything, they won't get everything the school gets in general, but, you know, we're picking and choosing side this is worthy, that the general community should be aware of it, not just for those with students. So, that's now on the, on the front of the website as well.
That's job, go ahead.
Thanks. All right, so-
I mean, Scott, just as a, I was thinking, what kind of timing do you think you'd need to set up any, some kind of like remote learning?
Well, you know, as we, we've been talking about at the Pearson Middle High School-
Right. I'm not talking about the elementary math.
Many of the teachers are already using some sort of technology, so I think we'd really have to, you know, look to that as them already having a lot of experience. Wouldn't have a great deal of time to do forums.
I was thinking, is there something we could be doing now, collectively, to work with Jim and the teachers, that, you know, a couple of teachers at a time to get ready, if that's the case, so that if it's a short notice, we've already got ahead of that?
Yeah, we can, we can certainly look to do things like that, and actually, what I was sitting here is looking for quick links that I could send them, like, you know, cheat sheets, you know, just here's step one, step two, step three, if you want to use this particular technology. So, yes, it is something-
I was thinking, we should consider doing that now, so that it's not a rush or a one-day thing, and-
Well, the other thing that I was making, just to piggyback off what you're saying, is, you know, I think there's a lot of students that have computers and internet at home. It'd be, it'd be nice to know who doesn't, so that we can kind of be proactive about making sure they've got a contingency plan.
Well, if you think about the fact that our Chromebook model is students leave the computers here, we already kind of have an idea of those that have come to us and said they're unable to do their work from home, and we've addressed that. So, we may not actually have to go through the whole process of distributing Chromebooks, it's an option, but we would probably do it only in the case where we had-
Right.
-students who came to us. But otherwise, I think our community is in pretty good shape in terms of having access to a computer and Wi-Fi at home.
Do we know that at younger grades? Because at the younger grades, they may not normally need to have access to that to be successful in the classroom.
Well, we've been having conversations, and I don't want to speak for Mr. Moon, but we talked about this today. Then, we make up different options for different grade levels, different, you know, subject areas and so forth. So, technology may not be the only answer that we, we come up with just for that reason, that it may be new to these students, or they may not have access to it at home, or they may just be too young, so.
Right. Because if they, if they're younger, but they, but the instruction is going to come through technology, we may not know that they don't have access to it because they're not having to do homework or something.
Right.
Again, I think we got something that was forwarded today, you know, some districts have provided the technology to every student, or technology to students that are in need, and I think it's just important that, we know that there are families that may be in this circumstance, that we will work with those families. If, if it comes to the situation where we need to, to do this, go down this path, we'll work with them to make sure their children are taken care of.
Yeah, so it's already a conversation that we got today about-
And no one will be left, kind of left, you know, behind.
It's important to start the process. I hope it never happens, and they just start it, but-
Another complication that we're facing is that because of the data privacy laws, we have to make sure that we have the agreement of any of the providers that we work with, if we're providing hotspots and so on, that they, we have the privacy-
Protection.
Protection, and that they sign all the required papers, which is a new process that we're working on simultaneously. So, we have to make sure that we cover all the bases, so we are in the process of having those discussions and moving forward with those plans.
Is, I mean, this is all new. Is, is BOCE's is kind of a central service organization, serving any new role in assisting districts through this process?
That will be discussed tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Yeah, and they, any of the programs that we use through them, they are required to follow up on that aspect, so we may have to transfer some of the processes we have over to BOCE, so they can take that over. And I would like to just publicly thank the administrators for the amazing job that they're, in addition to doing their, all their own responsibilities, have they, have all pitched in and stepped up to the plate, and very willing to go above and beyond with ideas, with work, with time, with everything, so I do want to express everybody's, everybody's extra work that they're putting in, and relieve all of the staff as well, not only the administrators, but other staff as well.
And we have another board meeting on Monday, right?
Yes.
So, I know we've got a budget workshop and all that, but can we have a formal agenda item of some update of this? Because I'm sure there'll be more stuff that happens between now and then, so folks will know that we're going to cover it, and if they want to talk to us, they know to come in.
All right. Anybody, anybody here for public input? Two. All right. Be sure. Can I get a motion to adjourn? All in favor? Thanks, everybody.